I'd like to call this meeting to order verified compliance with open meeting law notification and adoption of agenda. Please join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, without borders, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. Next up on our agenda is number three. It is recognitions and I believe, Tony, are you giving, doing this presentation?
Oh, Laura, Mike, join me up here. I've got a little bit to say about each one of them, just to kind of give you some background.
All right.
This is Mike Seeger, is a DNR forester and a Whittanale alum, and then Laura Surleddy. So I just want to talk a little bit about the awards that they had received from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and the LEAF program at UW Stevens Point. So I'll talk about Mike first because Laura has another little piece that we want to talk, tell you about with the school forest as well. From the start of Whittanale School District's journey, Mike Seeger has been a driving force and a guiding light. As the district prepared to author its education plan, Mike conducted his typical inventory land and repaired his report, but through the process, he became deeply connected to the project. Mike is a Whittanale alumnus and was inspired by the energy behind the project. He has continued to serve as an active member of the Whittanale School Forest Advisory Committee. He has made dozens of follow-up visits, supervised contracted work to remove invasives and manage the forest. He has dedicated his own time to mark trees, help plan trails, and serve as general counsel for this district as forest plans are developed, executed, and modified. Mike has also supported the district's outreach by providing resources for the block party annually. Additionally, Mr. Seeger worked with the entire Whittanale school staff during an all-staff school forest development day where he taught teachers about forestry, forestry careers, and educational opportunities in the Whittanale school forest. Mike has also been an invaluable resource in connecting the district with people and resources to support environmental education and school forest development, including equipment, contractors, supplies, and people. Mike has gone far beyond the expectations of a DNR forester. He is passionate about his project, as has been evidenced by his continued involvement. Whenever there is a question about the management plan, Mike not only answers it, but provides resources, information, and solutions to support our mission to utilize the forest for learning. He is always quick to respond, be it over the phone or making the long drive from his home or work. Mike participates in advisory committee meetings in the evenings and repeatedly comes back to continually advise us in how we can work to ensure effective and appropriate accordance with the management plan. Above all else, Mike is dedicated to the Whittanale staff and community. It is not necessarily in his comfort zone to present to all staff at a learning station in the school forest, yet he accepted without hesitation. He is deeply committed to the work and the people of the Whittanale community, and he too remains committed to the continued development of the Whittanale school forest. I can't think of a person more deserving in the DNR for his recognition or an award here with the Whittanale school forest than Mike Seeger. So I want to just present him to the board, and he has brought his award that we can probably pass around and check out and ask you to give, recognize him for his outstanding achievements.
Okay, just one brief comment. This has been fun, partly because I went to school here, but like I mentioned when Tony, when we had the original award ceremony, I work with a lot of school forests, and this one's been a lot of fun because of the people are so into it, both Laura and Tony especially. It's just been a lot of fun working with them. They make it a lot of fun to keep staying involved. So, that's it.
Class of...
What's that?
Class of...
Oh, seventy.
Not too long ago.
I was not his teacher.
Our second, a second award was awarded to Laura Surleddy. Words alone cannot describe the impact that Laura has had on the community and school district as a result of her work. While I realize that this application requires description, and this is what we had submitted, our school forest video, which you can see at our website, really pays homage to what has been done in that forest. At the start of the 1516 school year, Laura organized a school forest professional development day for all staff, and during this time, staff not only participated in lessons and activities to be used with students in the forest, but also learned about forest safety, forest industries, and forest careers. Laura brought together the school district, as well as the Greenfield Fire and Police Departments, the Department of Natural Resources, Weebs Staff, which is the state organization, community members, local gardening club members and parents, and a water science from UW Milwaukee. The Whittanale school forest has been featured in Teaching Today, Wisconsin twice, the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel on Thanksgiving Day in 2014, and local papers in print and online. The class of 2015 was so impressed, moved, and involved by the work in the forest and Laura's leadership that they approached her about donating the funds for a new Whittanale school forest sign as their class gift. Laura has presented and worked with the Whittanale school board and generated support from local businesses to move forward with continued work and improvements to the school forest, including but not limited to a cross-country course, outdoor classroom spaces, bridges, walkways, boardwalks, and handicap accessible areas. Community use has increased significantly as dog walkers, cross-country skiers, and nature lovers access the forest daily. I can attest to this because on last Wednesday, when I was working out in the forest, I had a lengthy conversation for about a half an hour with one of our newest residents who has two students who will be enrolling in our district for next year. Residents and local politicians have commented time and time again that this project has been and will continue to be a fantastic asset for all. Laura Surleddy is truly one of the most inspiring, energetic, and hardworking people with whom I've worked in my career. I can say without a doubt that she is the best teacher with whom I've ever worked. Students, staff, parents, school board members, administrators, and community members absolutely enjoy and have the utmost respect, deservingly for Laura. She is a humble but strong leader who is willing to work long and hard, be tough yet flexible, and is always willing to lend a helping hand and a listening ear before ever being asked. Laura Surleddy is just a remarkable person. Her genuine care, demeanor, and true dedication cause all those around her, children and adults alike, to work harder, strive to be better, but also to have fun, ask questions, explore, and learn. She has received numerous awards from national and state teaching organizations for her outstanding work. Her leadership in science and environmental education, curriculum development around the NGSS standards, have been recognized by the State Department of Education. Laura has regularly approached to serve as a consultant and participant on committees and advisory groups at state and national levels, including the Forward State Exam, ACT, and even lab software and equipment companies with whom she's partnered in the past. I wrote that many months ago, and I think since then, we've seen even more come out of this forest. And so I think it's, when looking at what our forest was and what it has now become, we literally have, and we've tracked thousands of visitors to our school forest each year, and none of that would have begun without Laura's work. So I present you tonight, Laura Surleddy, and want to recognize her for her outstanding efforts with the school forest. Speechless? No, that doesn't happen.
Well, as Mike said, we did have an opportunity to talk to the entire staff and thank them for all the work that they've done with the school forest. We mentioned that it wasn't about the two of us, that when you look at all the teachers and students that have been involved, it's been all 200 of us, because every teacher has in some way been involved out in that school forest, whether it's been committing, volunteering their time after school to come and build those things that Tony talked about, or to take their classes out, or to develop the lessons that we're currently using. It's just been a fantastic experience for us because everybody's been interested in it and everybody's been supportive. So we thank everybody. We thank everybody.
So the last thing I just want to talk about and thank Laura publicly for allowing me to have an excuse to buy a 20-inch chainsaw to use in the school forest, that was a huge plus. Part of this project and what we've been working with is uniting the community around the school forest. And Chief Cohn is in the back, and I know he's not here to be put on the spot, but because of what he's done with the Greenfield Fire Department and our efforts, he brought everybody on, pretty much everybody on his daytime, day shift staff, as well as people in the evening came to the forest, and they brought trucks, and they brought all kinds of cool, fun equipment. People got to try it on, and they taught us about first aid and safety in the forest. He's been involved in the block party around that, that whole piece, so thanks to the Greenfield Fire Department for doing that. We ended up also, as a result of Dr. Holt's, introduced me to the mayor, and through our forward-thinking partnership, had a discussion around the school forest, and that resulted in the Greenfield Department of Public Works offering to help us with that forest. So through a partnership with them, the, I don't know if you're aware, but the city of Greenfield produces all of their own street signs. They have a machine that actually, they custom cut it, and they do all the laminating and all that great stuff throughout, and if you ever see Pledge to Progress, the signs that have the multiple colors, they actually make that. A man named Dan Castle, who's the working foreman down for the Greenfield Department of Public Works, I don't think either Dan is here today because they both have, they're both tied up, but he makes all those signs. And so Dan Ewart, who is the superintendent of the Greenfield Department of Public Works, agreed to allow Dan to make us signs for the school forest. So tonight I have a sample of one of those signs that I just want to share with you as a board. The city of Greenfield will actually be putting the posts in for us and doing the mounting and creating these signs. But tied to these awards, in the center of the forest, Laura had an idea to create kind of a classroom, and I'm sure you've seen it from the road, it has all those great stumps in it that she had transported from other people's yards and wherever else in the, that they were dragged over. The City of Hills Corners has been outstanding in supporting us as well and trucking over loads of gravel and everything else. But at the heart of our school forest is that classroom. And so because it's a circle, we've named, named that Surleddy Circle. So these are what our signs are going to look like, their actual street signs.
Thank you very much. Thanks to both of you for all your hard work and everyone else who chipped in. I know my neighbor kids told me all about the invasive species that they've cleared out of that forest, so, and I'm sure they helped with all of that. So it's really been a tremendous project, and we thank you for all your efforts. Anyone else?
Thank you for letting us do it.
Oh, it is beautiful.
You know, I think we were, I know Nancy, you were in that original conversation that we had about, is this the way to go? And you said yes, and thank you for that, because it's been a real positive experience.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Great job. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have comments from the audience regarding agenda items. If you would like to address the board, we ask that you come forward, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to five minutes. I'm thinking a lot of you are here to present, so. But would anyone like to address the board at this time? Would anyone like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. A, approval of staff resignations or retirement. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Or would anyone like to pull, pull that one off?
Set the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none. I saw you, John. Motion carries. Item six, reports. PLC, building teams. Tony, are you leading that? I guess Tony is gone. He'll be right back. All right. Professional learning communities. We're looking forward to hearing about that. He's back.
Are we finished?
We're waiting for the PLC.
So tonight's report is basically to talk to you a little bit about what we've been doing with climate and culture, because I think that's a strategy that the board has identified as a priority, and our building principals have identified as a priority in their buildings. And so I just want to talk to you a little bit about, I'll spend about 10 minutes just front-loading this and talking to you a little bit about the history. As you can see, it's kind of amazing to see all these great teacher leaders here with us tonight. I think it's really appropriate, since last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, that you can see how many teacher leaders, and honestly, this is probably about half of the number of people who have been involved in this, this leadership component. A lot of people had things that they're, they were doing tonight, like coaching games and all that other great stuff. Also joining us tonight is Dr. Chris Hip. She's at the back table, and she'll be coming up to talk a little bit about her work with us. She's a researcher and has been obviously heavily involved throughout her career in professional learning communities, has published a number of books, as well as developed a tool by which we can assess our culture. So she's been partnering with us for the last five years and guiding our efforts around how that all works. So my clicker is low on battery, so I might have to just elicit some help there. Perfect. You always have to start with a cute baby picture, because then people will listen to you at least for a little bit. So the quote that I like to throw out from early on is, "I never let my schooling interfere with my education." And the idea is, what Mark Twain is trying to say here is that oftentimes in schools, we lose sight of what the bigger ideas are, the bigger issues, and how to best teach to, in a way that students learn, rather than just teach for the material itself. So if we're truly taking that seriously, then we need to develop a culture around that. And we talk about and question all the time, what is the heart of our business? And oftentimes, going to the next slide, we forget this. This is what we're all about. But when you're going to learn about all of this stuff, you see staff development where it's sit and get. How are you ever going to translate what you're seeing or what you're hearing into this type of activity? So the idea is, what we were trying to see is, we're looking for staff development opportunities that look like this. Oops, that's okay. In those pictures, there is not someone at the front of the room, there is not someone who's...
Are you clicking?
I'm not. It's not even on. There's not someone who's leading that professional development, it's teachers leading teachers through that. So what we talked about was, was our mission, I don't know if it'll, just do one at a time there maybe. Our mission, we're looking for professional educators working collaboratively and purposefully to create and sustain a culture of learning for all students and adults. That's the idea. It's not about just students. Oftentimes, we talk about what's best for kids. Well, we also have to talk about what's best for adults. How do adults best learn? What engages teachers in dialogue around what's best for students? Because if we don't have teachers who are feeling comfortable with each other, who don't feel supported, who don't feel as though the district, or their principals, or their colleagues are supporting what they're doing, then it's all for naught. So if that's our mission, our vision then is to build capacity to create and sustain a culture of learning focused on student performance and achievement. And what that really means is that we're not talking about, capacity is not about what we're doing right now, it's about the ability to continue that over time, not necessarily just this year or as part of a particular goal, it's about all of this stuff. So when we talk about professional learning communities, when you start seeing the data that we're going to talk about here, all of this stuff that you're seeing on this slide is dealt with in there, and all of that stuff is oftentimes overlooked when we don't talk about the actual collaboration piece, when we talk about the professional learning culture that underlies what we're doing on a regular basis. So what we set out to do, why I envisioned this mission, was to sit there and talk about what exactly, we learned all this stuff about PLCs. This district has been going down to Illinois since long before I even got here, and now I've been here for quite a while. So 10, 12 years ago, we started going down to Illinois, learning about what PLCs were. And we never really saw it translate kind of throughout the organization. So we needed to say, what can we do right here locally that will actually enable us to learn and grow? Dr. Hip is local, and she has tools that can actually measure that culture, rather than simply tell us what we should and shouldn't be doing. So we brought her in to kind of initially give us that framework, and I'm going to ask her to come on up and just talk a little bit about what that framework looks like before we tell you what we've been doing over the past five years.
As long as you use the clicker.
Yes.
I don't want it to break in my hand.
Jackie's a clicker.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I would be so remiss if I didn't turn around and say, this is the heart of, of all of the efforts. It's, it's all of you, and I cannot express enough about the professionalism of these people. They're not just leaders. They're, they're so connected and committed, and they take responsibility, and they care about quality teaching, and quality teaching is the greatest gift that we can give any child in a classroom. So the better they are, the better our students will learn. So back in 1997, I was a part of a federal project, and I was called in, there were 32 of us across five states, and few of us were brought down from the Midwest to the South. And we worked with a woman called Shirley Hord, who's world-renowned, and so it was a pleasure to work with her as well. But what she found, and what we have put together in a model, so that you can sit that model right up in front of you, and it can really guide you, help you understand what, what defines a professional learning community, first of all, because it's professional. It's not the students, you can have a learning community, but this is the professionals. So it's the administrators and teachers. And I've seen a lot of instructional aides, their professionals, who also play a very large role. But we've defined five, six different areas, basically. The first is you share and support leadership. Leaders come and go, and in too many cases, we've had leaders in a school district, in a school or across the district, and they get good things going, and then they leave, and everything falls apart. But if you start building a group like this, times two, and then that just becomes more and more pervasive, yet anyone can be a leader, and anyone can step forward to be one, and that has not always been the culture of schools. Administrators, they're the leaders. So our model, we have connected with Michael Follen, who's world-renowned as well, and he came up with a simple model a number of years ago, and he says, here are the school phases of development. We start, and then if you hang on the way these people have hung on, you begin actually implementing, understanding, implementing, doing, and then you get to the point where you sustain it. It's embedded in your culture, and it's just the way we do business. We know it so well. And you begin to broaden the base of people who are considered the professional learning community. So what you see on the side, without, I don't want to take too much time, because you'll be hearing from the teachers and principals, but share values and vision. If we don't share values in a school district, maybe that's the one thing we can hang our hat on. Watch what people do, and you know what they value. Sometimes people are afraid to use the words values, but we do outside of school districts all the time. Without a vision, you have no idea where you're going. That vision can change. You can be in a school like Chris's, and all of a sudden, 45% of your staff changes. But you can see that each one of these dimensions of leadership is further defined in sort of a linear fashion, and yet it's not always linear, because if you do get new people, it's kind of sometimes one step forward, two steps back. The heart and soul of the learning community is that we learn together. I don't come with my agenda. It's not about me coming to school, it's about me being a part of a team. May I say, you're a board, you're, you're a team, and it's so important that you work as a team. It's important to the district. That's more than likely why you are here today. So it's about learning together and then go out and trying things, but helping each other with strategies and understanding certain things. And biggest things is changing the way we think and caring and respecting each other enough to actually listen and be curious about one another and other views. Otherwise, we never move ahead, and we stay in our own little box. After we go out and try things, we come back and share it. If a school culture does not reflect a culture of trust and respect, people won't do this. They won't feel safe doing this, sharing their practice, and yet it's critical, because what they can share with one another can help every child in every classroom. Without the supportive conditions that exist in school, in the district, across the schools, across the district, you can't do that either. If we don't make the time for teachers to come together. Back in the years where I went to school, and in the years when I taught, it was very different. I was on the south side of Chicago, I had 60 kids in a classroom. Teachers did not work together in teams. Structures did not exist like they are today. There was competition instead of collaboration and working with one another. So you've got to have structures, and Dr. Brzezelski and the whole team here has worked so hard to not just pick a structure because it's the latest and greatest thing to do, you pick a structure because it supports the kind of culture you're trying to. And then last of all, again, the trust and respect. So Tony, you want me to go in with this?
Sure.
This is a tool that is a diagnostic tool, it's, it is used all around the world, several people use it in their dissertations. We've had over 300 people request it, but what it does is it, we take each one of the categories or each one of the dimensions of a learning community, and we have listed, after three years of research, what are the practices that can define each one of those characteristics, each one of those dimensions. So if you say, what are supportive condition structures all about, these are some of the things you would see happening in schools and across districts. So every year, the teachers have now taken this instrument four years in a row, and we have a very, very good turnaround with the tool, and this is the basis for all the planning, much of the planning, but we also know that no survey can tell it all. So we're also collecting qualitative data all the time, you know, dip-sticking out there, finding out, what does this not measure? It doesn't measure everything. So this has been sort of the heart and soul and the first activity we ever really engaged in after a keynote that, that I did about four years ago on collaborative planning. So, thank you.
So we're going to take you very quickly through our PLC journey over the past five years, and that was a very simplified version of what this stuff looks like. We're not going to throw at you a bunch of numbers so that you can wonder what all that, those things are. These teams are the teams that actually studied the numbers, and that's the beauty of this process. It wasn't administrators who said, here's a bunch of numbers, this is what we did right, this is what we did wrong. The teachers, these teacher teams looked at the data that came in, determined action plans, followed through on those action plans, and then looked at how the numbers had changed. And that's really what this journey has been about. So as you can kind of see, what we're basically moving from year one to year five is back to what we talked about before. Initiation is, what is this whole stuff? Unlearning the bad stuff, learning the new stuff. Implementation, actually doing what we're doing. And then sustainability, how do we keep this going? So the idea is that you're actually transferring, and this is something that I put forward in my research, I'm going to click it again, I think it'll come up. The gradual release of ability, we talk about for students, responsibility, but for teachers, if you can click it once more, and for our, our sense here, we're releasing ability from left to right, from being district-focused, saying this is our initiative, to being teacher-focused. So responsibility is, I have the capacity to act or influence as a member of this organization. Whether I'm a teacher, or I'm an aide, or I'm a custodian, or I'm an administrator, or I'm a board member, I have, I am able to respond and influence the outcome. And accountability, we know if it works, we know what to do next, and that's the whole idea. So what we did was, we spent year one initiating, and what that was, what do we have here? What does it mean? We did an initial baseline study of that survey that you had seen, the PLCR, and we said, okay, how do we, what do we keep, what do we stop doing, what should we start doing in order to improve this? So every staff in every building sat down with the data at different tables, and they actually wrote down things. Why was this low? I don't know. Why was this high? I don't know. This is what I think, this is what I think, this is what we need to do. And we said, what should we keep doing? What should we stop doing, and what should we start doing in order to, to make this happen? We took all that data, and we compiled it. Dr. Hip came in, and she observed meetings, she observed our professional development days, she listened to what teachers had to say, and then we met with principals to kind of look at that data, and that was year one. We had just kind of established a baseline. Year two then took us into looking at, on the left side of those six dimensions, really starting to figure out where we were in essence with all of those components. So what we did in year two, if you could just hit it again there, this is just, I guess what I can tell you about is, this is what the survey looks like. So what Dr. Hip would do for us is she would categorize them as strengths, mid-range, or challenges. So obviously, mid-range and challenges are where we want to pay attention. Green means that the number went up, red means the number went down, so on and so forth. And then we would actually take specific comments from teachers. So this would be given to principals and eventually the teams in that format. Here are the key takeaways. So we took all the stuff from all the buildings, as well as the principals, and said, from a district-level standpoint, what were some key takeaways? What do we know about where we currently are? Our current situation, our current reality as far as a PLC? This is what we came up with. This was the start of year two. We introduced then teams, and at this point, these teams that you're currently seeing here, as well as others, formulated this plan. What is our current reality? What is our preferred future? And how are we going to get there? So these teams actually came together and talked about vision and how this is going to work. They looked at all of these, these... They looked at all of these data components, and then they developed individual student school plans. So the teacher teams were the ones who were directing that. And the action plans that were formulated, if you can click it once more, you'll see that responsibility and accountability were a part of that. How do we know if we've done it? And who is being held accountable by what? So their actual SMART goal format, that we said, this is what needs to happen by this time, and how will we know when that happens? As a result, and this one will be a number of clicks, we talk about form following function. If you remember back, at one point, we had a superintendent, we had four principals, we had a technology director. Then I began my position, and slowly we started saying, in order to flatten our leadership structure, Tom Friedgert, right, tells us, Friedman, sorry, tells us all about the world is flat. The idea is that we need to flatten our leadership that needs to be shared. So rather than leadership being focused at the top, the leadership is focused at the lower, in the trenches, so to speak. So our twenty-four-member academic achievement team is eighteen teachers and six administrators, saying, where do we need to go and where does the vision coming from this whole piece? What we did is we took all of the stuff from the sites and then made a district component, kind of composed it all in one district place. And we were looking for universal challenges and strengths across the district, as well as seamless action planning across the sites and district. When we came to you and talked about staff development days needing to change from half days, mornings, afternoons, all that crazy discombobulation that went down, part of that came out of this. How do we best align K-12? How do we get work done and what works best for the community? Year three resulted in all of us looking at implementation. And this is where this vision came from, from the academic achievement team, and then again, looking back at the PLCR survey. Now we have three years of longitudinal data. We have a baseline, we have a year and a second year. So now we can start to say, where are we seeing trends? And these teacher teams, again, the important thing is, this wasn't done. Chris, Dr. Hip handled all of the analysis. She gave it to us in those pretty little sheets, and there are greens and reds and black numbers and comments, and we didn't have to do any of that hard work. She just showed up with that stuff. And as teams, then, we said, we're not going to deal with the stats, we're looking at trends. So these teams would sit down and say, our building has a trend to do this well and not so well here, and this is where we want to focus our energy. And they were determining the direction of that building and those improvement efforts. So year three was all about really wrapping our heads around what we were seeing as far as trends and each particular building, as well as at the district level. So the idea are, this is kind of the model that we came forward with, is data feedback, evidence, actions, perceptions. All that stuff, that's bottom-level stuff. That's at the classroom level. Gets funneled through principals and site PLC teams. They take all that data and they start formulating trends. Then principals and our teacher leaders come to the academic achievement team, and they filter that then through district administration, who look at district initiatives, who then funnel it to the school board, who is determining for all of us, vision goals, action plans, and analysis. And what you can see is, in this year, after we went through this model, went through this process, you as a school board truly did participate in this process already. As a result of this process, those strategies that have manifested, that vision, is exactly what we're focused on in our data. You have just given us the direction that we need to, to match exactly where that is to what the district is seeing as far as that relationship. So this is our current year, and this is where we currently sit. And as you can see, as we continue to move forward, year five and beyond, we're talking about know thyself. The adage of, we have to continue to look at ourselves, understand who we are as staff changes, as times change, as political climate changes, whatever it may be. We need to continue to know who we are and how we are functioning in order to know that we can continue to provide a high-level service to our students and our community as we have previously. So this year, we talked about transition to sustainability. And the idea this year, all toward this year and then into the future, is overcoming the implementation dip. Whenever you implement something, you're going to get kind of a resistance, right? Because it's hard to really, to really start changing the very base level. So how do we overcome that? We overcome that with a relationship process and a continuous engagement in the process. And like any great consultants, which there aren't many around, Dr. Hip was very clear that her, if she does her job well, then she works herself out of a job. So I let her do all that data analysis for years, and now that she'll no longer be needed, I put together a way of analyzing the data ourselves that we no longer have to have her necessarily do that. She taught me how to do it, and then we taught our teachers. So I'll just kind of walk you through this very quickly. I know this is meant not to be read. So don't strain your eyes. It's meant not to be read because what I want you to see is, if you, when you look at, data are nothing more than representations of stuff. And so all of our stuff are all these things down this side. The dimensions that Dr. Hip talked about, these are our six dimensions, right? We know those are our six function bases. Under each one of them are some very important things we need to do if we're addressing that. They also happen to correspond to a specific question on our survey. So now we can go back and look at that. Each one of those critical attributes then becomes a focus point. So as you can see, our first year is baseline. If it has a yellow box, it means that it's a challenge, or it's an area of paying attention to. A red means it was a challenge. No highlight means that it was a strength. If it's green, it went up from the year prior. If it's red, it went down from the year prior. If it's black, it stayed the same. So the idea is to find very quickly a representation, and if Jackie, if you can click that once more, you can look, for example, from a district standpoint and pull out that shared personal practice. Oh, my arrow disappeared. If you look at this component right here, you see all the red and yellow. So we know as a district, we need to start looking at, what is shared personal practice all about? And Dr. Hip will tell you, as she told us, and I don't think she's just telling us because she feels that she should, just to support us, but she's found in her research, that's typically the last step. Because it's the time where I, as a teacher, sit down with you as another teacher, and we talk about, what kind of results are you seeing? What kind of results am I seeing? And how do we make sure that those are the results are consistent? So it's one of the toughest things we can possibly see. So my point for being here tonight and giving you this kind of upfront is that what you are going to hear from these teacher leaders, from these principals, may seem fairly simple or it may seem fairly large as far as scope. It came from very, very, very specific data points, which came from all of our staff directly via both quantitative surveys, as well as qualitative work done by not only myself and the principals and these teams, but also Dr. Hip. So we made sure that we triangulated all of our data and that we knew exactly what we were looking at within each component, and then we can get a laser-like focus. When you can start focusing in on seven specific practices and then determining which one of those is really where your leverage point is, that's effective staff development. That's what we're all about. So tonight, you're going to hear from the site PLC teams. And the reason I put this picture in here, and you should recognize that room, it looks pretty familiar. Dr. Hip came in and facilitated with our teams this year as she was kind of passing the torch. And you can see, all those Venn diagrams up there are all the things that are currently going on in action plans, and they're all posted right under that mission statement under which we sit during each meeting. Because we were, that was symbolic of what we're looking for and seeing how all those things connect. So I'm pretty confident that you're going to hear tonight from each one of these teams as they talk about their building efforts, a direct correlation to what you're expecting as far as the mission and the vision of the school district. So I think Edgerton is going to come up here first, and Chris will introduce his team and take it away.
So Jackie, can you go back like three slides to that one picture with the, one right So I think, I didn't know this was going to be in here, but it's a really cool visual. Edgerton this year, I think Chris mentioned it, but up to forty-five percent of our staff over the past two years is new. And so vision and valuing was one of the most important things that we decided to work on as a group, not only the team, but then the staff as a whole. So this was a facilitated day. Chris was in our building for three hours period of time. It was about getting to know us as individuals, getting to know who we are collectively. And we ended that day, and this took a little longer than we thought, but we ended that day with the histogram. And every member on the staff, from the person who had been at Edgerton, I don't want to say oldest, the person who had been at Edgerton the longest, to the person who was brand-new, and at that time, we had a teacher who was starting on her very first day, because she came in mid-year. But everyone got an opportunity to talk about something they remembered from the past, the year they started. And we went by decades, and then we went by five-year periods of time, all the way up until something that they knew from the past, something that they were proud of, of the future or the present, you know, and we started to talk about future too, what we wanted to be. So we started to notice, wow, like, this half new. This half had been there a while. So that presents kind of a unique challenge to respect the people who have been in the district and in our building the longest, as well as the new and fresh ideas that people were coming with on our staff as well. So now we'll go back to the team. I could have left it there, they're there again. All right. So the team is, we have sixteen people total on our team, and I have three here with me today. Becky Richards. Becky has been in our building almost as long as I have, ten years. And then Rachel Mettle. And Rachel Mettle is her second year on our staff. And then Deesra here, her second time on the board this year. And how many years have you been with us?
Nineteen.
This team has put forth a ton of work, just an absolute ton of work. We meet monthly as a team. We've had opportunities to meet with Chris twice, and then again, so there are other classrooms for those meetings, and then again, when Chris came to our school. And then we meet periodically also as a staff to talk about our professional learning community. So one thing we wanted to do is kind of explain, looking at the data, some of our themes. Our theme was, a strong culture can still be strengthened. If you notice, the first five bullet points, five out of the six, five out of the six dimensions and the critical attributes within them, Edgerton came out really strong. And we felt really good about that data, we wanted to celebrate that data. But even within those critical attributes, there's still things that this team felt that we could work on. So like I said, one of our main focus, even though shared values and vision came out as being high, nine out of nine, that is still something that we felt that the data wasn't capturing completely what we wanted to work on, because we had so many new staff members. So vision and values was, I would say, the main focus of this year. Would you agree? Collective learning and application, nine out of ten. Supportive conditions, four out of five. Supportive condition structures, eight out of ten. What Tony said about shared personal practice, teachers working with teachers, the teachers on our staff want to work together. We just talked about this last week. They want to share their practice, they want to get into one another's classrooms. Our focus for next year and beyond is going to be providing the structures, putting the structures in place for that to happen, and then the time. And then specifically, what it is, what specific things do we want to be observing from one another? So there are structures that we want to put in place to make that happen. As far as strengths and needs, overall, the staff feels supported and included. We feel we have a strong culture. We feel that we can make it even stronger. We definitely feel that we have caring relationships that exist amongst our students and staff. Our staff has a strong commitment to improvement, and we have high expectations for all students. And then we still feel that we, while coaching and mentoring is there, and we've been very fortunate to have coaches this year, we've been very fortunate to start a mentoring program more specifically this year, and put more emphasis on that. We still want to increase opportunities for peers, the teachers, to be able to observe one another. And that falls under the shared personal practice. We also know that while we, and we've talked to the board before about how we have data points and we collect data and we have data meetings, we want to do that more frequently through common assessment work and be able to have the time and the structure to be able to, at the end of unit tests, get together more with the teachers so that we can learn more from that specific data, so that it's a little bit more timely. And then also, and lastly, we have a lot of committee work going on at Edgerton. Everybody's involved. But we felt that communication needs to be stronger in and amongst those communities so that we're not doubling our efforts, so that we're working smarter and not harder. So we wanted to celebrate that our data looked really good. We had no PLC dimension, dimensions, the critical attributes, so smaller components that were in the challenge column. We're focusing on a few of those components that are in the mid-range to try to make stronger. But overall, we felt like we had a successful year and some really good results. And I guess I'd like to say too, at the elementary level, and Lori could attest to this and her staff, we, I felt like we put our teachers this year through almost like being new teachers all over again. They had new curriculum in mathematics, they had new reading and writing units that they were learning this year. They were refining and reteaching some of the new science units. So there was a lot of new going on. And in a year where there's a lot of new going on, along with a lot of new staff, I'm really glad that we could work on culture as part of our goal. So that's what I would say. Dean?
Agreed.
Okay. Do you want to ask them any questions?
Does anyone have questions about Edgerton? Now we'll just go on to the next one then. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to echo Chris's comments and just thank the teachers for coming tonight. We get to come every second or fourth. Six of the nine members, well, the tenth, so seven of us, ten are here, so I'd like to thank them. We structured ourselves a little bit differently at HCE because, I'm trying to find the right word, I've been grappling with word finding, and I don't want to say that we're old, but we've got a lot, you know, our staff's been there very established for the most part. Yes, we do have a couple of new teachers, but for the most part, we're real established. So our formulation really we decided to do because we're a larger site, and people sometimes don't get out and mix and blend between the different teams, is we have representation from every grade level and every kind of corner of the building. So we have specialist representation and all the grade levels and special ed, and so that everybody can then get back out and disseminate, because we really felt that was really important. I think that as we talked about our emergent theme, we really felt like knowledge is power, that sometimes in that large school, when you're moving and hustling and bustling, that sometimes you talk to this group or you speak to that group and you hope the word will get out, and it isn't necessarily a strategic or purposeful way to communicate. So we decided, and really have made great efforts, in making sure that our communication is there and that we're as transparent as can be. We have used Google to the maximum. I mean, everything you need to know is out there for everyone to see, whether that be student data, so that anyone who's working between classrooms can know how kids are doing and literally twenty-four, seven, or even down to scheduling the conference room because you need the space. So we have literally everything transparently available for our staff to see in lifetime, whether they're at school or anywhere else for that matter. I think that that has been a huge piece that has helped us this year. It really, instead of having a lot of sit in front of each other types of meetings, what we've really tried to do is, the information is there, and then you've got that touchdown person at your grade level, who's your contact for that immediate help, and so that's been really, really powerful for us. The two areas that we felt, we really felt were strong this year were the shared and supportive leadership and the shared values and vision. Six out of the nine attributes being strengths. So that was really, we were happy to see that progress and that process over the course of the last few years. I think that as we talk about strengths and needs, I was thinking of what Chris was saying. So much of what he's talking about curricularly is the same in that new, you know, curriculum this year. And that's a challenge for people who've been teaching for a long time, because they know what they were doing, and now we'd ask them to know something different and to be really vulnerable in that. Because, you know, if you've been teaching for twenty or so years, it's hard to be the one that you're now, the tables are turning, you're learning again. And so while it's been kind of scary at times, we've tried to make it as pain-free. And they're trying to learn from each other as well, but that's been an established protocol with our new curriculum, which has been really helpful. Some of the areas that were huge strengths for us was the technology availability, instructional materials, we got that going on. We've got excellent coaching at our level from Jill Matson, who sits on our team, but she goes between both Edgerton and Hills Corners and actually Hill School too, and as well as Joe Lambert. So we've got, we've got those opportunities available. Our data communication access, again, that transparency piece was really important. Because without transparency, people start to create their own ideas of what their reality is. So that's been really essential. And I think too, the whole idea that staff members get this opportunity to change, to make those changes. We've seen it at HCE a few years back when we began the journey down positive behavior interventions and supports at PBIS Initiative. And that was totally grassroots up. Teachers and other, all staff actually, really deciding that was something that we needed to do as a school. And those are the types of initiation that staff will, they can have. Just to back up what Chris said, yes, we definitely need that structure. Just to back up what Chris said, yes, we definitely need that structure to allow for peers to observe each other and to get that feedback. That shared personal practice is our next step. Along with looking at how are we going to share student work? And in the sharing of student work, what we're able to do is find out, you know, not only how are certain kids accessing that curriculum, but if your students are doing really well in a certain area, how'd you do that? And that's another component of that shared personal practice. And then the one part that I know I've told the staff for the eleven years I've been there, you know, I was on the court plane or on the field, I wasn't on the sideline with pom poms. I'm not great at taking time to celebrate, very honestly. And that's something that we really have decided we've really got to work real hard at, expanding on the recognition and celebration. Because we're kind of a get or done kind of school. We kind of just go, we're going to do this, we're going to buckle down, we're going to move forward. And we sometimes don't stop to smell the roses or hear the accolades because we're on to the next piece. So I know that the team's going to help that, help me with that because that's not necessarily a strong student vibe. So, and so I think that in celebrating, we're going to feel really joyful about how we've done and how we've grown and how the kids have grown. I'm hoping so at least. Our survey results are really stable and if they aren't stable, they've actually reflected growth. So we're happy about that and proud of that. So any of our six members, let me just identify you if I could, and you're in the back row, some of you. So Nina Saranek, who is, oh gosh, oh yeah, that's the first time, she's, hi everyone. Nina Saranek, Laura Bilo, Julie Janak, Steve Morsey, Jill Matousin, Sue Kuzerek. And I really thank them all because they've just been fabulous to work with and really keep us, keep us all honest and keep us all moving, so.
And I forgot Jill. Jill is at every one of our meetings too, so I can feel that again. But yeah, Jill was part of the.
Any open questions?
Any questions? No, okay. Next up, middle school.
So the middle school this year had, if there's an opposite to Edgerton scenario, I guess this would be it. We have a very stable staff and only one new teacher in forty-four, but the leadership was new. So that was the, a little bit of flip there. So we spent the first part of the year just trying to get to know each other, get to understand the level at which we were all starting, where we were all starting as far as the professional learning community and just the trust and the comfort levels and feeling supported and what we needed to do to get wherever we were not currently at the time. So this was our team that has done the, just the amazing work that we've been talking about tonight. We have four here tonight. We have Alyssa Hansen. Smile please. Gina Roper and Rhea Reifner and Todd Stacy, our representatives tonight. So when we started the beginning of the year, because the leadership was new, there was just a lot of trust building and a lot of just reaffirming what was already working for us, but then really investigating and diving deep into what either was not working for us or just hadn't really been present to the levels that we were comfortable. So when we look at our emergent theme for the middle school, focused communication and collaboration equals deeper learning. And again, we're talking not just students, but we're talking students and teachers because we've all got a lot to learn all the time forever and ever and ever. The three bullet points underneath are sort of the big picture things that we have targeted moving into next year as what we would like to really latch on to as far as where we go from here. So first one, if you can't read it, development refinement of communication platforms. We are very communicative in the middle school, we are on email. Everybody for the most part knows what's going on in different parts of the building. But the systems are very fractured. So we have, you know, one team will put out information over here in this format, one team will put it out in this format, one team. Then we've got, you know, some teams trying to like pick and choose from all these different formats. So trying to streamline some of those things, just get things in common places or systematic places or develop methods that are just going to be easier for everyone to use very quickly and efficiently is a goal of ours. The second one, creation and system, system, system. Of data and reporting formats. Right now, we are looking at getting our grading practices more in line and consistent with each other and also getting them to the point where they are very clear to students since the students always know what they are striving for and what their targets are. So we are going to make some, some things a little bit more seamless for our reporting purposes and understanding purposes there. We would like to increase dialogue surrounding instructional and assessment practices. That's one thing that, you know, we're all good at what we do, but we really weren't engaging in a lot of real deep dialogue and, you know, I know what I do, but do I know what you do, do I know what you do? And are we doing the same things? Or are we putting kids through like a different set of expectations for seven hours of the day? And how can we make that, again, a little bit easier for us working together as adults and especially for the kids, their understanding of what we're expecting from them? Strengths and needs, so our two on the top are, these came out in that survey. I will say that the middle school survey in general took pretty substantial leaps forward in the upward trajectory just because we're starting to get better understandings of expectations of each other, from each other. And the collegial relationships that exist amongst staff members do reflect commitment to our school improvement efforts. That has always been in place. I think we can all agree that we've always been very committed and sometimes we're just not sure that we're all on the same page or same levels of commitment. So that's part of what we're working on now is just trying to make sure that we are all kind of working for the same targets at the same time in lockstep as much as possible. And then another strength was school goals focused on student learning beyond test scores and grades. We are really committed to the whole child. We, you know, those test scores are important, the learning is important, the grades are the indicators. But we really want the kids to understand that it's part of a community, it's part of growth and we are there for them emotionally, you know, for their wellbeing as well as for their academic wellbeing. And our needs areas, again, you know, our biggest need was really the whole shared personal practice thing. So the first one, coaching and data interpretation analysis, and then time to practice that. I think a lot of people take it, take it for granted that teachers are really, really great at data. And it does take practice because we do deal with a lot of data, but sometimes we interpret it differently. One teacher interprets it this way and one interprets it this way. And all of a sudden, we have all these different interpretations. So where a kid could be getting, you know, an A in this class, this teacher would actually give them a C for the same comparable work. So getting those systems, again, streamlined, more efficient, more understanding across the board so that we are all making sure that kids understand the expectations and there's no guessing games going on. And then continued professional development around best practices in assessment and instruction. So if you really look at that, all of those things really go hand in hand. We didn't pick a pile of things, we just really lasered into what things are interlocking and all sort of interdependent and hinging upon each other. And then our celebration is, we had significant gains in all areas of the PLC survey. We're largely in the strengths column and just a couple of things in the mid column. And so the actual challenge is going to be to sustain that, that amount of growth from this point forward. So team, what say you?
Dr. Holtz would like to.
Do you have something, go ahead, you go first. Did anybody? All right. First of all, I think if, when people look at this, they're seeing something they will never see again. Every single one of the fifty-two categories went up at the middle school. Every single one. That's incredible. That's a, what a statement about the effort made by the staff, the leadership team. You guys were absolutely awesome this year. Lynn's right, the sustainability is going to be the challenge because once you're there. But wow, I've never seen that before in my life and that's incredible. So, good job.
All right, thank you. Keep, keep it up. All right, Jackie.
Sometimes there's an advantage to going last, sometimes not. We have, our team is set up kind of similar to Hills Corners. We have a representative from every department and then two members from the administrative team. So Ryan is here tonight. And we also have altered our team a little bit over the years. So because our, our staff changed as well, we knew that we needed to gain some representatives from our newer staff so we swapped some people out this year. But here tonight, Nora Rigor is here, she's our guidance representative. Amanda is our science representative. Chris Noack is our PLY. Amy Spence is our PE representative. And then we have some other people who were not able to be here tonight. One of the things that I appreciate about the process is when we were able to get, our, each school had a representative and then we met throughout the school year last year as well as this year. And that really gave us an opportunity to look at ideas from their plan and things that were being implemented and sort of share and steal. And that, that worked out extremely well. At the high school, we also experienced a lot of growth this year. And, you know, our theme is sort of to plan and orchestrate our efforts and that means improve equals improvement for us. And I think what was really important was not just looking at the numbers and the results and saying we needed to increase our communication and assuming that could mean one thing. So for example, I read the results two years ago and I was like, huh, this is easy. You know, they want to know what's going on in the other committee meetings that are happening. We'll just email those out. Well, when we dug deeper into that, really that doesn't make the high school staff very happy. They have so many emails that having those pile up was very overwhelming for them. So having the conversation and being able to go back and actually create a plan, we did it over a picnic table one summer. And, you know, really making sure that, you know, and I was heavily focused on the use of Google Calendar as a way to organize. And then we also developed a staff site that just helped us house information as a common place to, to keep things. So those were big for us. So in the collective learning and application, we had a lot of growth there moving seven of the critical attributes into the strength area and then the other three moving from a challenge, from the challenge into the mid-range. And then supportive, supportive conditions and structures, we moved four things into the strength and then an additional three areas moved from a challenge to a mid-range. So a lot of that was dependent on the staff working together to seek knowledge, skills and strategies that apply to their work. And then professional development that focused on learning and teaching and learning. I think that they really appreciate the structure that's in place for the staff development days that gives them an opportunity to not only work with their K-12 partners but also as a department and on things that are important to them. The school staff is committed to programs that enhance learning and they rated highly the opportunities for coaching and mentoring. Some of the things that we identified as an area of need for next year is really our availability and use of data. At the high school, we use a council structure, so every staff member is a part of one council. And one of those councils that Ryan is in charge of leading really is focused around data. So this year, we've talked a lot about what does that look like? On Friday, they're actually going to create an action plan for the high school moving forward and, you know, how do we house it? What's important to us? We did a survey last week to kind of help that group and give them some indicators as to where we think we need to go. And then the implementation of opportunities. Last year, we had a group that developed an amazing structure for teachers to visit one another's classrooms. It's sort of like online dating. And it's, it's absolutely fabulous, it's super fun. But we're stuck with how do we implement it without overwhelming the staff and kind of building that in as a good structure? So that's really where we want to focus our energies. And our celebration is that we, we had growth in, in every area. You know, some of them were, were small gains, but some of them were really big gains. And we're excited about that because it means we're working better together. So I think you guys have a mail, you guys got to say something.
What's been really cool is we have people that are getting older and then we have the young ones coming in. And I feel like we can learn so much from each other. You know, the example that I think Dr. Kip talked about last time was, you know, maybe we're, we're so focused on something that isn't going well, the older ones, okay? And then the new ones are like, we don't even see this at all. And it gives us, it gives us a new perspective and that, that's what I really got out of the committee. The newer perspective from people that are just coming aboard or are very young. She's the baby. But that's been very cool.
The other thing I really appreciate is that for whatever reason, the meeting structure and being a part of the team really like puts everybody on the same playing field. Even though I feel like that. Ask me at any time and tell me something, there's, there's more openness in that structure and it really helps us to identify what's really going on, how do people really feel? And then put a plan in place so that we can address it. So I appreciate their openness.
All right. Any other questions here or comments?
Just to close, I just want to go back, back to and just real quickly say that, before we get to the questions. I think it's important to, to recognize as a board, and I'm telling you this just to point out to you, this is a rarity. You heard from someone who is a research expert in the field, who taught us all about the philosophy of the best practice. You heard from principals who led and empowered teacher teams to determine what they needed to get done, when they needed to get done, and even determine the plans by which that was going to happen. And once it was all finished, they went back and looked, went back to the drawing board and said, what worked? What didn't work? Let's celebrate what worked and let's continue this journey. And I think it's, it's really important to recognize the talent and the, the way that these folks in the staff, just because they're here, but it's been an absolute pleasure for me in these past five years. I'm telling you, you have the best four principals you could ever have in this district right now. You have the best teacher leadership teams that you could ever possibly have in this district right now. And I'm not saying it because I'm here, I've taken the show on the road. I've presented this at conferences. I've authored a chapter in a book on this. I just got invited to present at a conference, an international conference in Vancouver, Canada next year. They want to hear about our district. They want to hear about our teachers and our principals. And that to me, it's, you know, that's great. We all, you know, it's a testament to that hard work, but that's just, that's the amazing part of it. And when you see and as you heard today, the passion in these presentations, the, the true knowledge base of these teacher leaders, this is, this is sustainability. And this is what keeps this district continuing to move forward and continuing to provide the highest level of education for our students in our community. So I thank you, I realize it was kind of long, but I think it's very important and I think there was a lot of meat to what you heard tonight. And I'm sure you have a number of questions and I will most certainly step away and let you ask whoever you need to ask questions. But thank you for your patience and your time and thank you for allowing us to take this journey together.
Thank you. Quinn?
Well, I have a comment. I think, well, I know the board discussed the individual school goals, the district goals, and we were a bit skeptical when they were all were the same this past year and they're all about culture. And it was word for word, all the same. And then I see people talk about teachers didn't want to take risk and, and trust and, and then some things that Chris said really makes me feel good that we didn't change the goals and that we let it be about culture. And, and then you guys ran with it and I see the results and I think it's really important. And I'm glad that we get this feedback because we need this. We need, we need to find out, is it working? And I really believe, because you guys can give us all the data you want and it could be all screwed one way or not, we wouldn't know the difference. But I think we have heard good things from, from teachers, from parents. And I, and I think that, I'm very grateful that we did focus on culture as our goals for our schools this year. And I, and I think it's very important because we all want a good place to work and we all want to be recognized for the good work that we do, that's all.
Nancy, comments down here?
Well, one of the things that I've seen as a need in almost every slide for the schools is that there's always opportunities for more mentoring and coaching. And so that's something as a board we need to know because we need to be able to fund that and make that part of our goals and work that in, into the budget so that we can, we can support that. I remember way back when, there was a board member that, that almost every time we came up with something, the question was this, what do you need from us? And so that, that's my question. My admiration knows no bounds for this staff, you guys know that. But I'm still going to say, what do you need from us?
I just wanted to clarify, it was actually a strength, the opportunities for coaching and mentoring, not a need. Those increased, what we're, what, one of the difficulties we had is on, though we have mentors and we have coaches, we don't have an opportunity to see each other on a regular basis in each other's classroom. So that was the.
But that's still something we need to support. So that it continues. Because that's part of the sustainability when you're talking about your funnel. Because that's part of the sustainability when you're talking about your funnel that comes down and that helps us build our, our goals and our strategies as a district and as a board. So, what, what's next for, for the board? What do you want from us? Anybody? That wasn't rhetorical, guys, sorry. Tony? If no one's going to speak up, I'm going to look to you.
Well, I, I guess there's two things. The first thing is continued support of this, this work. As, as Quinn had said, you know, we, I know, I know that the board was a bit skeptical when we first presented those goals and, and rightfully so, right? Because it looks, for me, it's a little more, more warm and fuzzy than what I would even initially put out. However, when you go back and look at how statistically and how much analysis has actually occurred, it really, it really makes a ton of sense. So, I think that's a really important thing. I think talking about the mentoring and coaching, we put a, we did put a mentoring program in place for our first-year teachers. I don't think it's quite as robust as it could have been, but I did what I could over a summer and really tried to get that moving. There's continued support of our leadership team, our coaches, our K-12 coordinators, our ITLs. It really, I, I'm confident to say that you could ask any teacher in this district what they value the most. And in this district, it are, those leadership positions where they can go to someone else who's their colleague, not necessarily an administrator or an outside consultant, and say, I want to just throw some ideas off of you. I think that's, that's really important. So, I would say, you know, from a realistic standpoint, as the board moves forward and looking, looks at various compensation packages, things that reward teachers for this amazing work, whether it's monetarily or, or flexible time or whatever that may be, I think is a really important, important piece. So, as long as that enters into the dialogue, I think that would be a great way of looking at those resources and how to continuously, you know, sustain that effort.
Any other comments? I'll just maybe tag on.
John Jones.
I'm sorry, yeah? Oh, John, yes, John. Go ahead.
Yeah, all right.
Hold on, let me turn you up, hold on.
Okay. Good presentation. I think, I really appreciate everybody's hard work. If you can turn it down a touch, I think we're getting feedback. Anyway, it, it's apparent that you guys, you know, bought into this concept and really did a lot of work on it for a long time and I really appreciate it. It, it gives us a good look at what's going on. Tony, did you, did you or Dr. Hip come up with the, that colorful, colorful eye chart, the PLCA dash R analysis?
The PLCR analysis is the tool, the valid and reliable tool that Dr. Hip and her research team created. And then the colored chart was my eyesore.
Well, I, I really appreciate that because at a glance, it showed me, you know, I, I could tell a lot of things from it looking, looking just as a glance. I think it's a good product. Yeah, but I have to say, the first thing I noticed on that, once I got squared away on, on what things were, was to kind of reiterate what Lowell said, the results from the middle school, astounding job there. So, I just wanted to reiterate on that fact. But I certainly appreciate all the work everybody's done and you can see what's going on with that chart and, nice job. Thanks very much.
All right. I'll just add that, kind of tagging on to your comments, so what can the board do? That's always my question, what can we do to continue to support you in the great work that you're doing? I think the first thing we have to do is recognize that if we want to improve outcomes for kids, it's the professional practice in the classroom that has the greatest impact. So, what you guys are doing, we as a board have to continue to support that. And when you bring recommendations forward for things you want us to change based on your goals, that's what we need to do. So, I just wanted to, I couldn't help but think though, as you were sharing all these stories about my little grandson taking him to the park the other day and he's four. And he would not climb up this scary, it wasn't, it was like a little ladder thing, right? I couldn't get him to climb up it. That was last week. This week, I took him with his little four-year-old preschooler friend. The little preschooler friend went right up it. My grandson went right up it. I mean, it's the peer thing. I mean, it seems like a simple description, but I think that it's so true. I mean, it really is true. If we're, if you need help, it's going to be your peers that can come in and show you the way. There was nothing I could do to get rid of that fear in that little four-year-old. However, the minute that other one did it, he wasn't afraid. It was really kind of neat to see. So, I compliment you on your great work for all the way down. And Dr. Hip, I can't, you know, we've heard the name for years and it isn't the first time we've looked at this. You know, you've brought these reports to us occasionally and it, it really, I'm so glad we had the time tonight. The agenda worked out just great so that we could all, we could hear all your stories. Does anyone have, any of you have any final comment? And then Dr. Holtz, you go first and then we'll see if anyone out there would like to.
Just wanted to say that when Dr. Hip was doing her presentation there, it went back to the hours and hours and hours I spent in class with her. And it, because it's, it's mesmerizing when she gets on a roll and you normally, we had, was it three or four hours that, in one night that we would sit for? And you would think, oh my God, I can't sit still for four hours. But then she'd start and it was like, wow, it was eye-opening. And so, thank you very much for adopting our district and helping lead the troops. They did outstanding.
For allowing me to come and do this. The stick with this was a word I learned about 20 years ago. And we don't see it happening anywhere and then we wonder why there's no change, there's no results. And I, so thank you for allowing me to come in. Tony, thank you for inviting me to come in. I know there's been ups and downs and happy days and challenges and all that. And thank you for not giving up and you all for not giving up.
All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
You are on your way to being great. And that's what you want to be known for, not just good enough.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming, taking additional time tonight. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have our advisory committee reports. Gar and Jeannie, our co-chairs are here tonight.
Well, good evening. Again, I'm Gar Kronhelm. I'm vice chair on the committee. Jeannie Rupel, chairperson is, is here. In the last month, we put a lot of focus on, as a committee, trying to reach out to some key groups within our district regarding a, a key aspect of our recommendations being looked at. We met with the two PTO organizations at the elementary schools. We met with three lead administrators, principals, Lynn, Chris, and Lori from elementary schools and middle school, obviously. We also met with the staffs at each of those three locations. And what we wanted to really hear from them was regarding this thought that we have of moving the fifth grades from both Edgerton Elementary and Hales Corners Elementary to the middle school. We know that there's a lot of feelings and thoughts about how to do that, both from administration on down to parents and so on and so forth. So, we wanted to go out and solicit some feedback relative to that activity. As we talked to the groups, we did set the meeting up, just so you know, that we explained to them our reasoning for wanting to do so. Number one is to move the districts into a new additional wing at the middle school. It wouldn't be just take them and put them in the existing facility. We explained to them that one of the reasons we wanted to do that was that we feel that, again, reaching out, touching all of our facilities in the district will allow for further engagement in making a decision as a community about whether or not to move forward rather than just touching two of the schools. I think we've talked about that before. We talked about, again, what it would mean to us in freeing up space, certainly at Hales Corners Elementary to begin new construction, renovation at that location, but also freeing up space at the elementary school at Edgerton so that, again, they could have some more room to address things that they need to from that standpoint. And again, the additional space just provides larger facilities at all locations for today's learning environment that we certainly just heard a lot about, the collaborative teaching, personal intervention and so forth. And we set it up in a pros and cons format. We got a lot of good feedback. And the last committee meeting, we'll also do so tomorrow at our meeting, we'll continue to take that into consideration and help that drive our recommendations that we'll be making to you as a board from that standpoint. We also left it open after we met with each group if they wanted to follow up with us. Jeannie and I left our contact information. We did receive some additional feedback from a number of members so that, again, they had more time to think about this and what it would mean. And again, with most of us on the committee not being educators, you know, we really wanted to reach out and see what that impact would have, both, again, from pro and con perspective. So, we'll continue to review that and ask members to take that information under consideration as we move forward in making our recommendations from that standpoint. Our next meeting is going to be tomorrow. We have an agenda set where we have an opportunity to have Kevin Hickman from JP Cullen come in and just talk about the whole referendum process. Personally, I think the timing is real good for us as a committee to hear a little bit about that. We've been, as you know, spent a lot of time with engineering firms and contracting companies to get some feedback from their perspectives, reaching out to the staffs and the PTOs as we just did, and truly understanding what's before us, not just in way of brick and mortar, but, again, providing a right, ongoing learning environment for students in our district. And again, you think about the primary elections that took place not too long ago, last month in early April. A number of referendums locally here in southeastern Wisconsin were up and a number of them passed, not all of them did. But it'll be good to hear from somebody who's kind of expert in that arena to share their thoughts and where we're at, what we've been through and what we should consider, again, as we continue to move forward. We'll also have the opportunity, brought up by Dr. Holtz, to meet our new incoming superintendent. Luanne will be bringing Lisa down tomorrow to introduce her to the committee. You know, she's welcome to stay the entire evening if she can or whatever time she can afford, but I know a lot of us are interested in just meeting with her and I'm sure she's interested in hearing a little bit about where at as a committee and, and what we need to consider in a way of moving forward from that standpoint. So, again, a major activity, I've been reaching out to these key factors throughout our district to get feedback on that fifth grade move, to see how that'll play. Because, again, we know that that's kind of controversial at times, but we did receive some very good feedback from the various groups we met with. And we did get feedback that were, you know, both in favor, some that were, you need to consider this, there might be a negative impact there, and I think we all expected that. And just, you know, the entire committee was not at all of those group meetings, if you will, but there were several members, at least several committee members that could make it with their schedules because there were daytime meetings involved. And we appreciate the opportunity to have met with them and receive that feedback. So, it's kind of our update at this point. Jeannie, is there anything else to add?
I think you've got it all covered.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One last thing I'll just add, we are targeting to get to the board here by the end of June with our recommendations. We want to get in earlier rather than later, again, so that the board will have more time to consider those things, again, as we look forward to moving forward and addressing the needs that we have.
We look forward to it too. Thank you, thank you both and thank the whole committee for us, would you? Thank you. All right. Next up, we have our committee reports. Who would like to start off? Nancy, you want to start with personnel?
Sure. We've met actually twice. The first time was about the, we met with the teachers' union about negotiating that contract. And I have to say, we, we, I think we set a record because I think it was.
Five minutes.
Less than five minutes, probably. Yep, that we were done. It was T8. So, we will be voting on that under new business. And then the personnel committee meeting, or the personnel committee met, again, just to talk about the wages for the, for the teachers, the increasing that bottom wage, again, like we did last year. And so, we'll be meeting with the finance committee on the 16th.
All right. Thank you.
No report.
Finance facility? Nope. Okay. Just that we have a meeting coming up next week, Monday. All right. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Some of the more fun things that happened lately was grade three from Hales Corners had the unique opportunity to take place in weather day. They went to Miller Park and learned about weather from the storm team for meteorologists. And even a few of the students were chosen to stand on home plate and answer a question in the famous weather day quiz. Talk about putting a little pressure on the kids. They even had their picture on the big Jumbotron. After the presentation, students explored the various science fair booths. They also watched the beginning of the Brewers game. It was a wonderful experience for all that attended. And it's really kind of neat that they blend those learning experiences with fun activities and it really makes it more relevant to the kids and they really respond well to that type of thing. And I think there's going to be a lot more future scientists as a result. Hales Corners Park cleanup is coming up on Saturday, May 14th, from nine to one. The only reason I'm mentioning that is you're going to see a ton of our kids, a lot of our employees. Our kids are very service-oriented, our teachers are very service-oriented. So, stop on out to the park this Saturday, lend a hand, enjoy some of the camaraderie. And last but not least, we have some of the greatest theater in the world and it starts early. We have summer theater opportunity for grades two through nine this summer and we'll have kids participate in another fun summertime musical. Whitnall Drama will be presenting The Jungle Book. Our students will be practicing their craft in June and the first few weeks of July with the performances coming on Friday, July 15th and Saturday, July 16th. So, good luck to our kids and hopefully they have a lot of fun because it usually is.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up on our agenda, we have the 2016-17 school board meeting dates. I want to thank Kathy for the fine job of highlighting. If you had any concerns, you could go back and look at the calendar and she did a nice job of showing us exactly how holidays fall. So, we hope we've got this scheduled down pretty well. There's no need to vote on that. We're just presenting it tonight and unless you have questions or concerns, seeing none, then that will be posted on our website. Next up, we have the 2016-17 standing board committees, which you received in your packet. And I want to mention too that Kathy will be updating that document you got because it isn't just standing committees, it's committees and appointments so that it doesn't confuse people. The standing committees are the ones listed to the left, personnel, policy, finance and facility and legislative. Those are the standing committees. The rest we have to take care of in votes tonight, which, except for school board liaisons, again, those are just appointed as well. So, that's your standing committees report. Any questions about that? If not, that works, okay? And then preliminary staffing report. Joel, I don't, see Joel, is there a preliminary report?
Not to my knowledge. Yeah, you had one in the.
In the board packet?
There's one in the packet.
Okay.
So, anybody have questions when they reviewed the packet?
Seeing none, we'll move right up to the discuss and take possible action on a final partial layoff notice. I would entertain a motion, well, are there any questions on that position? Assuming that's driven, again, by enrollment, correct, Jackie? So, if there's no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the final layoff notice.
So, moved.
Been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
John? Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, we move to new business. So, then under A, new business, A, discuss and take possible action on CISA representative. Again, that would be Kevin. We need a motion and a second on that.
Motion, first, second.
Okay, it's been moved. Jonathan, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Nancy, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have discuss and take possible action on the Hales Corners Park and Rec. I believe that's you, Jonathan? Does that ever meet? Are there meetings for that one?
No, I just communicate directly.
Just keep, okay. Anyway, would someone like to move then for Jonathan to be our representative? So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Seeing none? Better late than never. Quinn? Okay. Next up, we have discuss and take possible action on Greenfield Park and Rec. That would be Nancy. Am I going too fast for you, Quinn?
No, I just see you paying attention.
Okay. Okay, that would be Nancy. Do I hear a motion to approve Nancy to be on the Greenfield Park and Rec?
Motion, second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. And then next, discuss and take possible action on WASB delegate and that this year would be Kevin and Nancy as the alternative. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. And finally, discuss and take possible action on contract settlement with WAFT.
Motion, approve.
Been moved.
Second.